President.
Frank here.
John here.
Here.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for a motion agenda.
Motion to constrict the agenda.
Your motion, your second.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public input, this is time plays, but discussion items not already on the agenda, with a timeline of three minutes each.
I just mentioned that the online banquet is coming up, I think this weekend.
Yep.
If tickets are available, if you still want to get in, have those business.
Bailey.
Just wanting to discuss a possibility in reference to Alexander Avenue extension. You see in your packet there is a photo here of this asphalt drive, and that is picture taken right up there. I believe there's some sort of a valve or water shut off in this area. So when we resurface Business 30, the plan is to asphalt down past the entrance to Blue Lagoon Storage. And Jeff is here tonight, he's proposing to add a building to that property. We had a meeting with the Board of Adjustment. As you can see, his driveway does not come out on the highway of Business 30. So he would like to see that portion be called Alexander Avenue, which then in the next night he can change his address. Then he could add his building so that his front of his property would actually be on the Alexander Street side, or Alexander Avenue side of his property, and he would be within the setbacks on the side. Because currently, with the highway of Business 30 being the frontage, he's not able to add.
Did you say excuse me after that, or what?
He's not able to add any buildings to that because of the 25-foot setback. What did P&amp;Z say? P&amp;Z approved, well, it's not going to need a variance, but they approved the variance assuming that his address would be changed to an Alexander Avenue address. Any questions? So basically, we need to name that Alexander Avenue through the entrance of that property essentially is overgrown. It comes down right now, Alexander Avenue is plotted on the maps. It goes to the T behind 4L. I don't know how much of that's true and correct, but then it stops. So this would be the extension, just be this section here, and then there would still be a gap that would not be technically considered a street, even though people use it. Really not going to change anything, same amount of vehicles are going to use it, it's just more of a formality to, we just have to put streets in there. Correct.
I would move. Second.
No change at all?
Yes.
No, we're just discussing.
This would be just to extend. Call that Alexander Avenue.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possibility in reference to address change for Blue Lagoon Storage.
So this would be change of Blue Lagoon Storage to 240 Alexander Avenue.
So 911 and stuff?
We have to, we'll go and update that, Postal Service, 911. Usually, I took care of the ones that were still messed up on 30, some were Highway 30, some were business. I actually got to the guy that actually does it, and so usually it's a day or two and they can get that sorted out.
So there's no Kirkwood Avenue?
No. It's just Business 30, so it's all simple and maybe moving straightforward.
All second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Took longer to drive in here than.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night, John.
Thank you.
Discussion possibility in approving resolution 12, 2022, referencing the entire of summer help.
We talked about this in the March meeting. So we had three applicants. I've met twice with Ben Morningstar, and this resolution is to hire him starting next Tuesday at $13 an hour.
What will we do?
Mike mentioned fire hydrant painting, he'll be doing the watering plants downtown. Got a bunch of mulch that's needed, parks, what other jobs do you usually have?
We've got, basically, we got a lot of water, we're in the park where a sprinkler will be from the lights, so that's going to heat up a lot of time. So between that and the moment we.
Is the seed all down?
Seed's not all down, seed will be all down tomorrow.
The only part that's not seeded is where we had to drive to remove the poles last Friday. So like, running field is.
Running field's done.
Probably done, yeah. It's just down for concession.
Yeah, went down with them.
That was the first one we finished on, so it made it easy to do the first one down.
This is our regular summer help, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion to end Morningstar.
Second.
Your motion is second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye.
Representatives. You have the, just the energy, solar forum in there, that's all of that. City engineer report, Dave.
Just a couple of things to update. First is we continue to work on the well project, the other is the water main project that we received funding for the well project, so we can shift some money over to the water main. We've been working with Travis and Brandon on getting that scope defined, and picking up additional survey and point through some preliminary design on that.
Maybe any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Always work.
We got the place from the people who passed away in the cemetery, so that should look good for the holiday festivities out there. Most of the dirt work is done in the city park, like I said, we're going to finish up some stuff tomorrow, get that touched up with holes for sitting. And the pool update is, we're going to be really close to opening it up on Tuesday. We normally, Monday or Tuesday, give or take that day, the holiday. Being we're not working, it was beneficial for the city not to pay the two palowas to have it open on Monday and just do the official Tuesday. We will have to paint it in the fall, the cure time with the paint at these temperatures, it's 14 days. And in the fall, when it's warmer, we'll have a shorter window for cure time, where what got us into trouble is the rain we had this spring. We can't have any rain on at least first 48 hours. So it might look like it needs painted if you go down there this year, if it does, but in order to keep getting it open like it's supposed to and keep it running, we're just going to do that.
Has any trimming been done on the trees around the cemetery?
No, we've spent the last two weeks trying to get the poles in.
Any questions?
Yep.
Any questions, Travis? Person or.
We started intro on Saturday, Coach Pitch had their first practice tonight at 6:00. They'll do Mondays and Wednesdays, and then T-ball, first practice tomorrow, there are Tuesdays and Thursdays out at Seeds of Faith, and just been doing a lot of mowing and weeding. Other than that, I think that's all up yet.
How many persons did you have?
We had around 150.
Oh, nice.
Yep.
Any questions, Burton?
No.
Please permit.
Nothing additional, unless you got questions.
Anybody anything to add?
Yeah, I do, and this is a little off, because I'm concerned about nuisances, and I realize that maybe when we switched over, that, I don't know who takes care of that, but we've got lawns like this, we've got porch problems, and what, how does Mel Vernon handle that?
The city, we have, they have a person that handles that in the city hall staff.
In the city hall staff.
I do have something in my report, and I guess I can touch on it now. I went to a nuisance abatement conference this last week, learned a lot of stuff. Also been meeting with Lynn County Planning and Development. They're going to give a presentation at our next meeting here. Currently, right now, Lynn County Public Health does our rental inspections, but it's a little bit out of their wheelhouse, I mean, they do it, it's very low-key, you know, and they work with the homeowners to get things right. Lynn County Building is developing a program where the building staff is going to be the one to do it. Nothing will change as far as like the inspections go, but they're looking to do this service instead of public health, so it's just kind of a transition of jobs per se. And also with that, they have a nuisance abatement service that we can go through to help assist with some of this stuff. Currently, right now, I go around, like, I had a list of seven today of yards that were over the height, and you call them and leave a message, and you wait for them to call back and try to work with them to get the yard done. One guy went out and he got half of it done, but, so currently, right now, it's on my plate, but it would be nice to have some help, so I just wanted Lynn County to come and talk about it, at least give a presentation as to what services they can.
It boggles my mind, unless you have a medical reason or something that you live in a house that you don't want to mow. They have apartments for that, that sort of thing. But I drove around today and just looked, besides finding paint, I drove around today and there are some, it's the same old ones, and I know I bounced down a couple last year, and here they are, you got mowed, and here it is now like this.
So how long do you give them after you reach out to them?
Most of the light tomorrow, if I don't hear back, I'll call them again, if I get ahold of them, I'll tell them, can we get them both by the end of the week? And then most everybody has been real good. I know that we've discussed a couple addresses where the houses are in for closure, those get tricky, but I did find, we got hold of the one, and they actually mowed this last weekend, so.
I noticed the newer one is, is they'll mow the yard, but they won't mow the parking.
Yeah, that's, that was a couple phone calls today, so one person truly didn't know that it was their issue, but, and of course, you get tenants versus landlords, and usually works better to go through the landlord, because then they can push them to get it, because ultimately it's going to fall down.
We give them a lot of them 72 hours. Not the city, because I'm the one that's doing this, does it $75 to 12?
Do they call, or do anything else? Do they call, or just post it, or what?
That would certainly get my attention. Well, that would. You don't pay a tax grab on taxes.
Which I know we've done that, we did that one last.
And I understand what you're doing, you know, I understand, I mean, you live in a small community, you want to work with people. I understand. But it seems to be the same people. It's the same people over and over.
Oh, yeah, I got, the one guy, I got his name, it's a sticky note, and his phone number.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I just, I have, I have no feeling of concern about those people that just do it every time and stress the limits.
Any other questions for Doug? And the report that was in there, Bertie?
I do not have anything, I don't have an update, but it's going where the brother roundup's going on right now. There was a group of guys that went over last weekend and grilled burgers and carried out groceries and such like that, so I know they had distant tips that day, I think there's right around $300 they got, just up that day for the two hours they were there, so it sounds like that's going pretty well, and I'll report back next month when they have the tally.
And the city engineer, or Bertie, questions? The new administrator.
All right, bear with me, there's kind of a long list. Park update, the lights are obviously in, all the poles have been taken out, the lights have been removed off them, taken to the city shop, the poles are out in the sports complex. Travis, as he said, will finish up the seating down, but other than that, that project is pretty well completed. Just thanks to the guys for helping, they're, seemed like we were either out there, it was either raining and 40 degrees, or it was 95 and humid, so everybody worked together and it was, it was good to see, so. Bar update, I talked to Kirk Lynx, he's thinking about two weeks, as I reported last time, all the concrete tuck pointing is completed. He found a barn north of town, he's not sure that those are going to work, but he did find another barn out in Marion, but the problem is in getting access to that barn, it's tricky where they're at, so they're, they have some barn boards, but they need to go back and get some more, and he's thinking about two weeks he'll have that first barn wrapped up, and I'd be able to report more at that time. Also over there, John's Electric did, and Alliant did install that pole, now we're going to put power over there for running the well for the irrigation, for putting water in the pond, so that is just waiting on the final inspection, then there'll be power, it'll be live, so. History center update, I believe Becky and maybe Ann both are on. So we got an email from BSM, they sent a paint specialist out from Sherwin-Williams, and there was basically three options. First option was to do another coat with that removal that they, that they used down there, that was kind of the most expensive option. The other option was using a different sealant, it'd be more of a paint, that would just kind of go over what's there. However, you saw in your packet, there's this information from Becky, reference David Arbogast. He works on, specializes in brick and mortar, and they had to reach out to David, because in order to apply for Lynn County grant, you had to use him as a resource, and he is offering to come down here for $745, as you can see in here, to basically take a look at everything and give his professional opinion, since this is what he does. They have this money in their budget, and so they're going to go ahead and have him come down and do that, and then hopefully get his report and bring that to you as to, so you guys can make the decision on the next step. Becky, do you have anything to add?
I met with David Arbogast this morning, and so we talked quite a while in great detail about the building, I gave him all the information I could possibly think of, so he took a good look at it, and he will come back with a report with some options for us, as to what we might want to do with it, and what would be the best steps, that sort of thing.
I apologize, did everybody get that? That's a real old caller. I've been fighting with all day.
So can you explain to us what is going on with it, as far as what, where are we at in this process, because I guess maybe not all of us are aware of, as it stands, where, what, what's happening?
Well, right now, what they've done is that they've, they've started stripping off the paint, and we've gotten down to the lower layers of paint where the lead paint is, so we still need to keep stripping. They had a hard time, because the weather had gotten really cold on them and that sort of thing, so we still have more to do. They haven't finished their, their first contract of stripping, but we'll probably have to do a little bit more. They'll, they'll clean up what they, what they've gotten done, which will take off more, but we need to get it down to approximately like 85, 90% off, because the lead paint is kind of crackled underneath, and that has to, that whatever's going to come loose, we have to get it off before we can do either a sealer, and we can look at what all that costs and compare to take it all the way down to the original brick, and it's just going to be comparing costs to get there, and whether we just get it down to where we can put a breathable water repellent on it, so it keeps the bricks in good condition. Figure that out, and then the next, once we get the paint down to where we need it, then the next step, that we've got HRDP grant for, and a Lynn County Historic Preservation Grant for, is to help pay for doing all the repairs on the, on the brick, and the cracks and the mortar, which still has to be done, whether we, whether we seal it with a tinted coat or not. There's a lot of bricks down lower that were spalling, and along with that comes to fix, fixing some water areas where water can be the foundation level, which isn't a really big deal, but it needs to be done, that's where the water is ricking up and making the bottom bricks spall, that, which is like a fallen apart, dusting away. So those, you know, so we'll figure out how far, how far, what we decide to do with the paint, how far we go with it, take it all the way off, a tinted coat, a sealant over it, and then we'll, then they'll need to fix the brick, and then we'll do whatever that, that final coat is going to be, the water repellent coat. So either it's tinted, so it'll all be like a brick color, or it'll be the brick.
So currently, okay, so you guys got a $19,000 grant to do what they're doing right now, correct?
Right, right.
And we haven't, they are not completed with that $19,000 contract, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and we know for sure that that $19,000 will not fulfill what needs to be done?
Right, yeah, we're going to have to do some more stripping, because there's, there was so much paint out there.
You just mentioned that you have another grant?
Right, we've applied for, we've applied for two other grants, and then possibly a third one if it comes up. So we've applied for a grant to help with all the masonry repair, and we also just received a $5,000 grant from the Lynn County Historic Preservation towards that, towards the masonry repair.
And how much was the other grant that you applied for? I'm just curious, because I, I'm just curious, because I feel like this was kind of a concern of a lot of ours, to be prior doing this, is what happens if it doesn't work? And now we are at this point where it didn't fully work, and.
Right.
There is work repaired that needs to be done, and so I guess that's kind of where I'm at, I can't speak for everybody else, but is this going to become a money pit? I mean, honestly, because that's kind of the direction that it's leading to.
Sure, that's a concern, sure, that's a, that's a concern, and it's a concern of ours, that's why there will be options, that's why we called this guy, this consultant, come in, and I'm, you know, so I've talked to him, I understand, you know, this is the city building, you know, we can afford a money bit, but we want to, we want to get this stabilized, and, you know, so he's looking at those kind of options for us. And, and I think we, it didn't surprise me that, that they were having such a hard time getting some of that paint off. I do think that we do have to talk to them about the fact that, I don't think that the weather was, was ideal for using the product, and I think they know that, and so, you know, we're not, we're not going to turn around and pay another $30,000 for them to do another coat. They've got, they've got work to finish, their first layer of stripping so far.
Are they doing the front of the building?
Not at this point, the, the front of the building's in good shape.
But is there like paint on the front of the building?
There's, there's paint on the front of the building.
I, I thought that was the process, was trying to get rid of all the lead paint off.
I don't know if there's lead paint on the front of the building, I mean, we haven't, we haven't tested that, just because that's all intact. Whatever got us, whatever got us to realize that there was lead paint was when all the new paint was just peeling off in sheets, and that's when we, that's when we had it tested, and found out that there was lead paint under there. And so that's what we were, I mean, we couldn't do anything for the west side until we got, until we get the lead paint off. Because you can't scrape it, labeling, the city cannot hire somebody to go out and scrape the lead paint and put it into the air.
So when they're, so when they're peeling this, Becky?
Uh huh.
Why, why isn't that tinted?
Why isn't that?
Tinted, so none of that lead base paint could go airborne?
Well, because actually, it's, well, I guess it is tinted, it's tinted white, but, but it's sticking to those sheets, they're putting a stripper on it, and then it's, then, then that all, what's coming loose adheres to these sheets they put on, and then they're peeling the sheets off and putting those into bags, and they have to take those and dispose of them properly. Because, you know, it's scraping when it's dry, so that this is kind of wet when they're taking it off, so it's not being released into the air. So if they, if they were scraping, then they're letting it all out into the air, it's, you know, it's dry, so it's flying around, so this way it's not.
Any questions, Becky?
I, I do, I guess, has anybody said they can actually take that paint off? I mean, they.
Yes.
They originally thought so, but they've been there for a month, and they haven't even got 50% of it off yet.
They have a month, they're there now?
Well, no, they're not there now, but they've been there a long time.
Well, it was, yeah, well, we're trapped in all of that.
But I mean, so they're halfway down, and it's still got two-thirds of white paint on a couple of.
He told me that if they did another, another coat of that, that he was pretty confident he could get 97% of the paint off, but he said, he thought bricks were, some of those bricks were in too bad a shape, and it might not be the best option, plus, there was a substantial cost of that. So that's why they reached out to David Arbogast as a consultant, to get his recommendation on how to proceed with it.
And I'm not clear on what that is, what his, what his, his recommendation is.
They don't have.
People don't have it yet.
He just came, he came, and he's going to go back, and then he'll get his report, and then present it.
I got, Becky, I got a question, why is this costing us anymore? I mean, they, they signed a contract to peel the paint, right? It wasn't just.
They, they signed a contract to do one layer, one layer of stripping, or I should say, one, one process, one application of stripping.
Which, which they admitted to that the weather wasn't conducive.
I, I agree, no, I think we're going to be negotiating on this.
So I, I mean, that's, that's just my, my concern is.
Oh, no, I'm with you, I'm with you, Juan, all right.
Perfect.
When, when they, when they signed the contract, did they, is it stated in there anywhere that it was, they'd be able to take 90% of it off, or a percentage of it?
No, I don't think anybody would ever do that in a contract, because you really don't know when you get in there, because the first layer could actually be a milk paint, and that might, that might take it as a different kind of stripper to get that off. There's different strippers that work better on different kinds of paint. And so that could, like the first one, if it's old enough, because we, we're not sure when it was first painted, and so the first, the first layer could be a milk paint that they would use, that would really adhere to the brick better, if it was, if it's old enough. And that's just the learning curve you've got, doing something like this, and we just had, you know, and if it's milk paint, and it's holding on, we could, therefore, if we're going to coat it, if we're going to, you know, tint, coat it with a tinted layer.
Did it say in the contract anything about weather? I mean, because if the chemical can go in any kind of weather, then they're not going to, they're not going to stand behind that.
They didn't in the contract, we do have the, the, the sheets. They didn't in the contract. Um, we do have the, the, um, the sheets of information on the, the, uh, project. And that's what I've gotta read over closely. I, you know, I, I read over it lightly before, but now I've gotta sit down and really study it and find out exactly. So I'm su, I'm sure all pro, the products that I use, they give you a window of temperatures and humidity and things like that, that work, that are, you know, best to work in.
Well, it's pretty darn cold when they were working there.
Yeah, I was concerned about that.
Well, I'm old and you have to talk real slow to me, but I still don't understand. Are they upcharging us to finish this because it's taken them so long?
No.
They're gonna, they're gonna go down and then if we have, they're what, partway through on the first coating, right?
Right, so they still have more to do. That would, that's considered that first track.
There is a whole layer of brick there, yeah. So it's all, all got a lot of white in it, so they want to do it. What, is there an additional cost for the second coat? Yeah, or where, where do we stop and get, and relook at this thing?
Um, well, when they get their final application and their final cleanup of that application, then we'll, and we may, and Brandon and I may be sitting down with them and talking as soon as we get the report back from this guy and, and talking to him to see, you know, we'll talk about it. But they still have, they still have some of this first application to finish. And then we'll be talking to them about, about, and again, his, this guy's, um, the consultants, think what they say, to use a different stripper going further down the layers of paint. He may recommend that. And so that's what we've just gotta look at and look at the pricing and see where we want to go.
When it, when it's all said and done and they get it done, they're supposed to produce options. Like there was three, potentially four. And those will all be brought to you guys and I'll have them here to answer any questions, so that way everybody's in the know as to.
I don't think we can really-
No, I don't think there's, this is just, just an update as to, because I know people have wondered what's, what's going on, so.
And I, I mean, another, another thing, Becky, I mean, it's, it isn't, but it is. It's a time of concern. I mean, we're, you know, how long does it take them to do this, what they've done, this little mother, what they've done? Then you got somebody coming in and replacing all the mortar and everything. Two and a half months, we got sourcrows. We can't have that all locked off.
Um, right, no, it'll, that'll, once we get the, once we get the paint off and if everything's good and everything's stable, then that'll all be cleaned up and taken away. It's not gonna be pretty. But then they're not gonna start until after sourcrows.
Okay, sure. Uh, you get the stuff together and get with Brandon and we'll get it in a packet and get it here in the, the gym and we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. I'm, I do have on my list also for Brandon about the gazebo over at Myers property, so we'll be talking about that too. All right, thanks, Becky.
Brandon, keep going.
Thanks, guys.
Well, it's on my list, so, uh, gazebo, I talked to Lynx Brothers. That package was ordered and they're just waiting for delivery and he thinks, um, he's gonna have that done before the first of July. So reading this fiscal, fiscal year. Got any more of that? No. Uh, sports complex update. I've been working with Lisa for permits, getting all that in place. And also reached out to her about a groundbreaking ceremony, so I will update you guys when that occurs. John Brulick is a high school student here in town. Um, he's part of the jazz band. And within the jazz band, um, with the support of the band director, they've kind of come up with their own little jazz band group. They call it the Lincoln Subet Jazz Band. And they are going to, or had requested to come down and use, um, Lincoln Square, um, on Wednesday nights for about an hour on July eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth. So if any of you want to come down and listen to some high school students that are in the jazz band play, they will be at Lincoln Square.
I guess, great. What date again?
July eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth. I believe they're all Wednesday nights at seven o'clock. And the last thing, um, this was discovered here about an hour and a half ago. Cory Green had her hearing last month. We all had it down as being on the ninth. And for whatever reason, on the letter that she had, uh, received, I had typed in the twenty-third, which was tonight. So that is why she isn't here or wasn't here. So I will own that and that's my mistake. And, um, so I request, if you guys don't have any issues, I'd like to add her to the June thirteenth, present any further information about that. Okay. Um, and then the last thing, um, hopefully the next meeting, uh, we talked at the joint, uh, school board meeting about the shed at the park. I may have some details and information for you on the June thirteenth meeting for that, so. That is all I have and I'll take any questions that you have.
Good, Brandon? That's a good thing we don't have any questions. Christine, you got anything?
Working on end of the fiscal year items and starting up all the yearly reports. So know the ledger.
Anybody got any questions for Christina? How, how is, did we get the cemetery thing? You know, I should-
It's not, no. No, not yet. It's coming through the line.
Be after the first, it's, it's in the next budget. And, um, the, uh, I said cemetery, everybody just looked at Travis. What the hell they got there?
St. John's is on-
Yeah, St. John's is gonna also, um, participate with that and go in on that, so.
And yeah, update on the trees out there, not, uh, not the ones like that are big, big ones.
Oh, that size coming in?
Um, Ty was in town working on some other ratio trees. And the hose in the struff blew. He had to have a specialist come down, so that's pushing him back, so. He's gonna get out there.
Is he gonna do it done, as soon as he's done down here or?
I'm assuming as soon as he gets done with, just tell the other ones to get him over there. Now, we did tell him to wait until the ground is dry, so if we get dumped on tonight.
For a memorial, did he?
Yeah.
For a memorial, did he?
Yep.
All right, anybody got any questions for Christina? Uh, council report, Sarah.
I don't have anything.
John? Uh, thanks to the Lisbon Historic Preservation for all their hard work on that many projects. Also encourage people to volunteer. Southeast London's in need of more volunteers. The Friends of Lisbon Library would like to see participation in more of the community. Uh, there's just, uh, all kinds of places you could volunteer. We probably have some open news on some of the boards for the city too. I'm not sure where we stand there.
We're about to pull up. We have one opening and one person has contacted us that's interested, so I might do her.
Is that for the tree board?
No, that was for P and Z.
Oh, okay, because they had one that said she was gonna talk to you about getting a form for the tree board. We'll see. That's all I have.
I do have one. Congratulations to all the graduates. Sorry, come pull me first then because I clam up. Congratulations to all the graduates.
All right.
Same to me. Congratulations to all the seniors who graduated. Um, there's a story called "My Kids' Diploma's Are Signed."
I, I went and graduated from U and R last weekend. He didn't even get a diploma. None home, not a medical.
Um, and, um, Wednesday, the first baseball game's at the park.
I did the new lights.
You can mention that in your report.
There was a light.
Nice. Okay, Mike, your turn.
Well, I'm mad now.
I, I just wanted to say thanks a lot to the people that got those, those lights up and stuff. I mean, we're in a very narrow window and they, they got it done. They do look really nice. I mean, I've gone by there a couple of times. It looks come on.
It did, yes.
Your, time has passed.
Our one tonight.
And then, um, congratulations to the graduates. Uh, congratulations to the girls and boys, track team from Lisbon. They had a pressing weekend. And that's all we have. All right, Mike, back to you.
Dog licenses. We've got a whole lot more dogs, so we got licenses out.
We can't, we can't make people register their dogs. They kind of gotta do it, I mean.
No, but it's a, it's a safety, it's a safety for the, your dog.
I agree with you on that.
For how many dollars is the license?
Five dollars?
Six.
Five, five years.
Three years.
Yeah, it's, so, uh, it's just ridiculous. If you care about your dog, license them. And I would venture to say that the majority of them in town are not licensed from my-
Put, put something on the water, go as well, Tim.
Hold it.
Graves is in the news again. And that's another reason we need to give people the license, their pet, have their shot.
And then the other one is, is, to me is, is that you go around and there's, there's still grass like this. And if, why would you, and that's, that's something that we, the city administrator should not have to go around and tell you to mow your lawn or require you to, which we can, or we can have it mowed and bill you. Uh, but it's just ridiculous. You're living in Lisbon, a, a nice community. Let's keep it looking nice.
And we, I agree with you. I mean, we spent a lot of man-hours trying to get this community looking nice. Anybody got anything else?
Somebody's got a hand up up there. I don't know if they got it.
Uh, she had asked-
Who did?
A question in the chat and this, I believe it's been answered, Danielle. On the Zoom. I don't know if she has any more or not, but she'd ask, she must be over the Cory Green. She'd ask what, if it was on the agenda, so.
All right, all right, engineer.